Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 4 Webster Board of Education meeting. Would everyone please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? A pledge allegiance Thank you. And may we have a motion, please, to move out of executive session?
So moved.
Mike Soff in a second?
Second.
Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving directly into board business. A revenue anticipation note resolution, which is will entail a roll call vote. Brian, would you lead us through that, please?
Sure. I think this is one of the first times we've done this in a long time. But not knowing what's going to happen with state aid cuts. This is something I think gives us some greater flexibility. For instance, what a revenue, it's a RAN for short, is a revenue anticipation note. It's taking a short term borrowing to help cover your costs until state aid gets delivered. So for instance, say if we get a cut June 30th, we don't get our last state aid payment, which is what normally gets us through the summertime before tax collections come in. You know, a lot of districts in that position would issue a revenue anticipation note, take a borrowing, have the cash on hand, and then pay it off in the fall once the tax money starts coming in. So this is, you know, I'm not implying at all that we're going to use it. It's just one of those fallback prudent things that rather than have to hurry up and get approval from the board and get all the ducks in a row. We have them lined up already in case something like that does occur. So this resolution is good for a 10 year period. And it allows us to go and utilize this if absolutely necessary.
Is this sort of like a line of credit?
Pretty much. Yep.
Mm hmm. And it helps maintain our spending, which of course you know is important to me.
It's, you know, it's all about cash flow, you know, the flow of aid and taxes come in. Our bills are relatively stable, but our revenue, you know, fluctuates. It's very seasonality. So, you know, RANs are all about cash flow and helping get through some of those leaner times if necessary.
Does it have a low interest rate?
It would be bid. So it would depend on, you know, we take the lowest of whoever threw it out there, whatever bank or financial house bid on the package.
Okay. And then should we need to take advantage of this? Would it come before our attention again, or?
I'd give you an update, but this resolution is in perpetuity for 10 years. We, you know, if we were going to do it, you know, if it was something like, oh, my God, we got cut, you know, on this day and we needed to make payroll on this day. You know, I could trigger it and then give you guys the update of why and how it all transpired.
And if you never use, Brian, would there still be a charge?
Nope, there is no charge. It's just, it's just sitting there. There's no, you know, it goes through our same borrowing process. So if we're projecting, we're going to be short or, you know, I say it's a million dollars, we bid out a million dollars and we get all the interest rates returned to us and how much that would cost and what the payoff amount is and the closing date. You know, it's a very short term. Doesn't last longer than 12 months.
Sounds good.
Brian, why do you need this approved for 10 years?
Oh, that's the standard municipal language.
I don't follow that.
That, so you don't have to keep coming back and do a resolution every single year. So 10 years is what our bond council says is the standard municipal language that he puts into all of these. So any municipality that would adopt a resolution for RAN for a timeframe of 10 years.
I don't know, it just seems a long time between 10 years and one year. There's not something in the middle? Like five?
I could always go back and ask them, but this was the recommendation of the attorney.
The attorney for the bond company or the school?
That is our, that is our attorney. Bond counsel is our attorney that does all our SEC filings for us when it comes to borrowing. You know, the year timeframe I alluded to was if you borrow on July 1, you have to pay it by July 1 of the next year. You can't take, that's the short termness of it. But this resolution, once adopted, is good for 10 years. You do not have to go back and do it. Very similar to when we put the proposition up for the Capital Reserve. That has to be done every 10 years as well. Voter, that one needs voter approval. So you just redo it every 10 years. This is just, you said it once and it's good for 10 years.
But this delegates the board authority for a period of 10 years.
Correct.
Right? So you can go out there and raise money for the next 10 years.
Yeah, anytime.
Anytime.
Within a 10 year period. Yep.
That just seems long to me, to ask the board to approve that period of time. I may be the minority on that, but that just seems a long time to delegate our responsibility.
I could go back and ask them.
Yeah, but Mike, I think Brian would come back each year. Every time there's a RAN and, and I would think that, you know, Brian would come back and say, hey, we need a RAN for this year. So it isn't like you're delegating blind authority for 10 years. Brian, is that correct?
Yeah, this is just the resolution that approves us the ability to do it. You know, it's, you know, it's not like a Tuesday, we could go do it and you guys don't get notified. Because every time we go to borrow and, you know, Tammy can, and Linda can attest to this, Tammy has to sign about 30, 30 pages worth of documents and sit with Bill and go line by line with them every time we borrow. And it has to be signed by Tammy or Linda and Carm and myself every time we go and officially borrow money. So I think that's an important step in this too, that it is a resolution to empower that we could respond to these fiscal things as they come up without needing a delay for another resolution to come before the board.
But this says the power to authorize the issuance of revenue anticipation notes. Right? So Tammy may have to sign, but does she have the ability not to sign? I mean, we're delegating to you the authority. Right? You don't have to come back to us to issue a bond. We may have to sign the documents, but you don't have to come back to us to issue a bond for the next 10 years. If I understand this correctly.
So it's not, so it's, it would be one, one per year. You couldn't do it. It's, you can't do it on a revolving basis. That's, it's called arbitrage. So you can't go and borrow and because we have good credit, get a low interest rate and then immediately just take that cash and sock it away for savings and make the interest earnings. We'd get nailed for, on taxes for that. It'd be a penalty. That's municipal borrowing can't happen like that. So if on, you know, July 2nd, we had to do this to respond, I would notify the board, we're, we're doing a RAN for X amount of dollars because we're short of this. You know, Tammy, Bill's preparing the paperwork. Here's, here's who got us the best rate. We do a bid. You know, JP Morgan Chase, 1%. So for four months. Because we only need it for four months because we're going to get tax revenue come September, October. So we pay it off four months from now. Tammy signs the closing documents like she does with every borrowing and it becomes part of our temporary debt service. It's, and it's paid off in its entirety four months from now. So it never, you know, it's for cash flow purposes. And then, you know, we're done for that year. And if we have to repeat the process the following year, do it again. We could do that without needing a board resolution every year.
Or board approval.
Well, Tammy's the board approval. The board president signing off on it is the board approved, the final, final stop.
So to put this really simply, it's like a permission slip? Should we need to use it?
That is, yeah, that's one good way, I guess, to, yeah.
Yeah.
And you might not even need it this next year, but you might need it two years from now on August 15th or, you know, sometime typically doesn't meet.
Yeah, and this is one of these things that you never, you know, I teach, when I teach the classes at Brockport on school finance, I always tell the students, if you see a RAN in good times, when you're applying for a job on board business, don't apply. Because that means they're cash strapped and they're going to have some financial difficulties. This though is, we're, we're not cash strapped. This is to be able to respond to mid-year cuts. We are not the only district doing this right now. This is happening across the state. Districts that have never, haven't done this in 10, 15, 20 years are doing this exact same thing right now for fear and anticipation of mid-year cuts.
Brian, I fully understand the value and the needs in the short term. Where I'm struggling with is five years from now, you still have the same authority. Seven years from now, you still have the same authority. Nine years from now, you still have the same authority. Nine years is three board terms. So that's where I'm struggling. It's 10 years. Not that there's a need this year and maybe next and maybe the year after that.
But again, we cannot do this.
Right? We're delegate, it says, we're delegating the power to authorize the issuance of revenue.
Correct. But we still need, the board still has to sign off. Every time we go through this, the board still has to sign off. So if there's ever any issue, the board president and her, and, you know, her conversation with the rest of the board, you guys could always say no.
Yep.
I can't imagine that ever happening. So, but.
Yeah, we just did a short term borrowing for the capital project. Tammy just signed a significant amount of documents that Bill had sent to her. You know, we do this probably once, maybe two times a year through Tammy and Linda meeting with Bill, our bond counsel. So I don't think there would ever be a time when it wasn't approved by the board.
In the event that we should need it.
Correct.
Mm hmm.
And again, it's done. Yeah. Thanks, Mike.
Okay. Anyone else? Does anyone else have any comments or questions? Can we have Cindy then, would you lead us through a roll call vote, please?
Sure. We need a motion in a second.
Can we have a motion to accept a resolution to the revenue anticipation note?
So moved.
Mike Soff, a second?
And then the second.
Thank you, Linda. All in favor? Cindy?
Okay.
That's right, roll call.
Yep.
Can you please vote, Tammy? I'll go through all the names.
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Okay, moving on to the treasures report, April 2020.
Just one thing I want to point out on the last page, you see, we had some investments mature, some T bills through Chase. Towards the end of the month, they matured. We have pulled those back. We did not reinvest that just for anticipating anything coming from the state. We didn't want to lock any further funds up. So that's just one thing I wanted to point out. Other than that, not a lot happening in, in April from a treasurer's report stand, standpoint, as far as revenues coming in. We just get our county is bringing us, are making us whole with unpaid taxes. That comes in in April. But just wanted to point out why you see that large number hitting the front page. Because if you see on the third page, we, those matured. We are not reinvesting them at this time. We're gonna, we're going to be a little bit more liquid as we get through these first couple look back periods.
Okay, any comments or questions on the treasures report? Can we have a motion, please, to accept it?
A move.
By Jan, second by Mike Soff, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Brian. Moving on to the Webster Central School District Safety Plan. Welcome. Thanks for being here with us. We look forward to your plan.
So this is the same plan as last year. We didn't really feel any need to make any changes yet. We're obviously sitting here anticipating what the state is going to tell us about pandemic planning, but without some direction from them. I think it would be premature to change our plan until we're mandated because we don't know what they're going to ask us to do or not do. And I'd hate to put something in here that we then, they don't want us to do or is contrary to the recommendation of state health, CDC, state ed. So every year, the board needs to approve the plan. And it is the same document that you guys looked at and approved last year. We didn't feel any need to make any changes right now. Obviously, this is the district wide plan. We also could put pandemic planning into each building level plan and then those become confidential documents that we can just create on a district level without the board having to spend time reviewing all that. We'd certainly make it available to you, but we don't, you don't have to then formally adopt those building level plans. Questions? I didn't receive any questions from the public or any emails, Cindy, at all from the public for their public comment period. So.
Okay.
We didn't get any questions last year when we did this either.
Right.
Oh, there's still so much that's in flux that I agree would be premature. Given that the plan was approved and adopted as is, it seems responsible.
I have one question, Tammy, for Neil.
Sure.
Considering what happened in Minnesota with the police and the actions taken against African American, is there anything that we could learn from that incident that we would build into this plan?
No, I mean, I, the superintendent has, you know, charged other individuals in administration with working with district employees for sensitivity for minority groups. And there are clubs and organizations that are involved in those activities. And when the students want to engage in some activity to discuss something, we've allowed them to do that in the past. For example, there was, they wanted to get together and show solidarity over Parkland three or four years ago. And we allowed them to do that in the gymnasium at the schools because we really didn't feel it was safe for them to go outside at that particular, and they were okay with that. So it's a very sensitive topic, certainly right now, but it's not something that we're required to put in our plan. I don't know what else to say, Mike.
No, I think that's a good response. You know, I don't have an answer, Neil. I'm just kind of asking the question because this is, you know, we have the pandemic and then of course we have all issues about racial equality that are being brought to the forefront. And I just want to make sure we are sensitive to our students and staff. You know, maybe it's you, maybe it's Carm to, to think about this as we move forward. And the board, of course.
For sure. Agreed.
I think that's a good point. And also I'd like to add the, the response to Parkland, I think worked out so well because it was done in conjunction with students, security, the school resource officers. Everybody met together and found solutions that were amenable to all parties. So that was definitely a collaborative approach. And I would think that anything else that, that developed or came to the forefront would be done in the same manner. So.
Definitely. Definitely.
So many things to be aware of. It's unfortunate and true.
And maybe we can engage the FIRE group in, in our thinking too. And Carm, you sent a great letter out, by the way.
Thanks. Yeah. And, and all of that is happening behind the scenes right now with FIRE. We have, we have a meeting with them on, I want to say next Thursday. Or maybe it's Tuesday. I can't remember. And we also have some students who are attempting to organize a, an event in support, well, an event for Saturday, next Saturday in nine days. And Neil and Officer Hurley are working with, it's a dream club event through Schrader. And so, you know, again, it's wonderful. They're taking that, they're taking the initiative and they're exercising their First Amendment rights. And we're just going to make sure that they're safe. That's all. So it's going to be, yeah. It's pretty cool to see them safe, number one, obviously, but also, you know, raising their voices. So it's, it's good stuff.
Great. Thank you. And Neil, again, this is an incredibly comprehensive plan.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Neil.
Thank you.
Neil, I was just going to add that what's happened in recent days and months has pointed out how appropriate it is for any organization to have a very thorough safety plan. You can't think of everything. We certainly couldn't think of this coronavirus, but you can think of the organization and the structure and the people to meet any emergency. And I think this plan covers it very well. We've had training last year. We've gone through different activities. So I, I think we're in good shape compared maybe to other people that are as thorough. Thanks.
Well, yeah, thank you. It's, you know, as I, as I've said to Carmen before, I am probably his paid pessimist. But I'll be, I want to be wrong every day.
Yep.
Every day, I want to say, plan for the worst. And when it doesn't happen, I'm good with that. Because there's something in the back of my mind that's completely unscientific that says when you plan for the worst, that won't happen. And I know there's no scientific foundation in that statement, but just somehow it makes me feel better.
You can sleep. Just having a plan makes you feel better.
I don't, I don't sleep very well at night. Some nights, Mike, but that's okay.
This is how he can accomplish so much and deliver these amazing plans for us.
Thank you.
I know. And this was well accepted by everybody at our last approval process. Anyone else have anything that they want to add or speak to? Okay, I think we could have a motion, entertain a motion, please. The WCSD safety plan is presented.
So moved.
That was Michael. And second?
Second.
Everybody's second. Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So before I sign off, I just want to thank the board for their support of our activities from a safety and security standpoint. It is, doesn't go unnoticed and it's much appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you. It's great. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
If I could add, one of the largest parts that has improved our vision around this stuff is Dave and Kevin are two resource officers and the work they're doing in the district.
No question.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Have a good night, folks.
Thank you very much. And, okay, moving on our, on our agenda, we have the approval of Monroe County School Board Association officers. Mike Soff is going to take us through that conversation.
Normally at our annual meeting, we would take care of this. But since we have any annual meeting, we got to do it individually at each of the boards. So our nominated committee has nominated Amy Thomas for president. She's from the Pittsburgh School, Pittsburgh Schools. So we need a second to that nomination.
Second.
Tammy, you want me to run through the votes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it passes 6-0. All right, we, we have nominated Gary Bracken. He's from the Spencerport Schools. We need a second?
And a second?
Thank you, Linda. In favor?
Yes. I think superintendents also get to vote on these appointments.
That's right. Carmen gets to vote because he is a member of executive.
I will do. I will do whatever Soffe says.
You get to vote, Carmen, 7-0. All right, Linda, seconded for Gary? All in favor for Gary?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, it passes 7-0. And we, John Abbott, who's from Monroe 2 and East Rondacoy, been nominated for treasurer. A second?
A second.
Thank you, Tammy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it passes 7-0. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Soffe.
All excellent people we have the pleasure of working with. So that's, yes. Great officers in place. And now moving on to the first reading of the new policy, data security and privacy policy. Swinson is going to take us through this conversation.
Yep. First of all, want to step in here for Sue Casey. So I will do my best to represent the positivity of policy board as best I can.
Black tape.
Near and dear to her heart. So I'm doing my best here. I do want to shout out to Brian Zimmer and his team. He, he has certainly taken the lead on the data privacy piece. As you, as the board knows, ED Law 2D was signed in not too long ago. And with that came some requirements that the district had to follow. One of which is the approval of a board policy that addresses, as you've seen in the document, a protection of personal identifiable information of students. Also data breach protocols that we need to follow. Revision of third party contracts that have data security requirements built within them as well as apparent Bill of Rights regarding data security that is part of those contracts as well. So anybody we have contracts with have to go through that and meet a new stringent guidelines. In order to be approved as a vendor to be used in the district, they have to follow those ED Law 2D requirements. So this basically puts that into place. And obviously, as the governing body of the district, we need your approval in a policy to approve those going forward. So the requirement is that we have a policy in place by July 1. So the hope is we have a first read and a discussion tonight. And then revisit this for a second read, hopefully on June 16.
Okay.
Some questions about the policy?
I know data security and policies around it has certainly become a hot topic with school districts before the pandemic. And now the result of so, so much remote learning and working for people across the country, it's become even more so a hot topic. So this is very timely and we appreciate all the effort behind this.
Yeah. And I'll point out one, one piece to note, and I'm sure you've probably noticed that in pictures of students or any kind of communication that we've been putting out, it does not have the student's last name. So things like that, that is a result of ED Law 2D that we're being very careful with student information.
Dave, do you know if we've ever had a data breach?
We have with other vendors. I want to say it was, I don't want to name the name, name the company, because I'm not 100% sure the name of the company, but we did, I want to say over the summer. And there were protocols that we had to, to follow in order to make sure that, number one, you're communicating with any families of students that were involved as well as the company, as well as the state. So there are very specific guidelines. So there are very specific guidelines you have to follow and parent communication being a significant part of that. So, and I will, to clarify too, that data breach was not a result of something that the district did internally. But anytime there's a data breach with a vendor we use and they have a data breach, we are then subsequently required, which is why those agreements have to have those provisions in there so that they have to meet those guidelines.
I can add, Mike, that this was a data breach that did happen across the area. We worked with BOSI's because it was a contract that was actually held through BOSI's as well. So when that happened, one of the consequences or one of the results from the company was that they gave individuals that were affected rights to experience or one of the credit monitoring companies for, I believe, a year.
Okay, so it sounds like we learned from that too and have put in changes.
Certainly is an area we've been learning from many of those breaches, for sure. That's why there are so stringent laws right now.
And I think from a district's lens, it also solidifies the rationale of why Brian Zimmer and his team is so important and our data team as well with the importance of what's going on with so much information being shared digitally now.
Great, thank you.
So this will come back to us June 16. And barring any recommendations from board members, are there follow-ups or other additions or edits that you're looking for from a different source?
No. No, I think as is.
Okay. Okay, then, can we have a motion, please, to accept the first reading of the new data security and privacy policy? Maria, and a second?
Second.
Mike Suff, all in favor?
Aye.
Carries. Moving on to old business, we have several items in the consent agenda, including minutes, personnel actions, recommendations on the Committee of Special Education, and a couple tenure appointments. Carm, did you want to speak to those?
Oh, we have. Sorry, guys, wait a minute. Oh, here we go. Sorry, I'm sort of new at Zoom. I haven't been doing it. I haven't been doing it.
Nice try.
Nine hours a day. So we have two principals that I'm recommending for tenure, Mr. Paul Benz. And Mr. Benz has been a principal at Schrader for four years. He was also a math teacher for a little bit, then an assistant principal at Spry. And before he became a principal, the Northwoods Woolkit, before coming back. So, and Mr. Benz has done a pretty amazing job at Schrader, especially with culture and climate. And we also have Mr. Craig Bodensteiner at Plank North. Craig came to us from Spencerport after 20 years in the classroom, fourth-grade classroom teacher, and also a legendary baseball coach. He came to State Road as their assistant principal for a few years before being named principal at Plank North. So I wholeheartedly, with no reservations, recommend their tenure appointments to the board.
Two extraordinary individuals that we are very fortunate to have in our district. And I know within their buildings, the leadership they provide, but also the lives of the students they touch. I can say just from being on learning walks in both of those buildings, every student is known by name, is addressed. They know if something's going on in their lives. They know that, everything about their students and treat them as their family. So I'm very pleased to be in favor of this and very grateful for their participation in our district. With that, the only other item I'd like to point out is recommendation to leave the National Food Service Program for the high schools after our presentation, last meeting from Mark Balfour and Stacy and, I'm sorry, Kathy?
Kathy and Stacy, yep.
Yes, yes. We are so excited about what changes that they're talking about and able to bring to the district. And just wanted to highlight a couple items because they're standing out in our consent agenda this evening. So does anybody have anything to add? Mike, did you want to add something?
No, I was just going to, a motion for consent agenda.
Yeah, I was going to do that too, Mike.
And a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? All right, motion carries. So with that, can we entertain a motion to adjourn as well?
So move.
Jan? Mike Alt? Okay, everybody continue to be safe and take care and we'll see you June 16. Don't forget to go.
Right.
Thank you.
Tammy, Linda, and Carm, can I borrow you a quick for something?